So, we are approving the agenda but moving. Okay, but we are moving.
I move to adjourn the executive session.
Get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll go. Regular meeting of the governing board for order. Let's all rise for this pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let the record show, all board members are present. Dr. Weidenheimer, Kim Redding, and Flat.
Stanley.
Stanley has joined us as well.
Oh, yes, Flat Stanley is here today.
Um. Do we have any awards? Oh, can I get a motion to adopt each of them?
I move, we adopt, the governing board adopt the agenda with the change of moving item 9B to before item 7A after item 6.
May I get a second?
6D.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Awards and achievements, are we here, are we there? Okay.
Good evening, President Fisher, members of the governing board, Superintendent Weidenheimer, and special guests. Tonight, we recognize DECA champions and super recyclers. More than 700,000 students and teachers from across the country participated in the Keep America Beautiful Recycle Bowl, collecting more than 2 million pounds of material to be recycled. The Paseo Hills Student Government is a small but mighty group that which class had collected. The students kept a Google spreadsheet with all the information. At the end of four weeks, the students had collected more than 4,000 pounds of recyclable material. And that's a lot for just five students. And it was enough for Paseo Hills to beat out every other Arizona school and become the Recycle Bowl 2017 state champions. Congratulations to the Paseo Hills Student Government and the five students who dedicated themselves to this project. Lane Wood, Cody Wood, Wyatt Duncan, Zachary Montano, and Melanie Lee, and their co-sponsors, Nick Helmick and Brittany O'Leary. DECA is an international association of high school and college students and teachers of marketing, management, and entrepreneurship. The marketing communications category of the DECA state championship competition measures skills, knowledge, and attitudes in marketing communications, functions and tasks that inform, persuade, or remind a target market of ideas, experiences, goods, or services. Students are given two case studies. They must read and comprehend the case studies and then offer solutions in one day. Students utilize critical thinking skills to present to a judge who questions competitors about their proposed solutions. Brandon is a current DECA state officer and a four-year member of Mountain Ridge's DECA team. He has excelled in competitions in the hospitality case studies and comprehension of marketing core tasks. He is a multiple medalist at the regional and state levels. He's also on the Mountain Ridge volleyball team, and the game is running long, so I'm sorry Brandon cannot be here tonight, but congratulations to Brandon Roberts, 2017 State DECA champion of marketing communications. Our next folks hustled over after the tennis game, so we're glad they got here after that match. The International Business Plan category of the DECA state championship competition involves the development of a proposal to start a new business venture in an international setting. Participants must apply entrepreneurship knowledge and skills, prepare a 30-page written proposal, and present the proposal in a role-playing interview. You may remember the trifecta known as the Ravi triplets because they won the state title last year as sophomores with their gourmet marshmallow dessert company idea called Hot and Fluffy. I'm still waiting for that store to open. This year, their winning business plan involved a trampoline business with potential for international expansion. In addition to their state title, they have each won several other DECA and business-related awards. And in their spare time, they've created a nonprofit called Growing Roots Charity. They promote events like a blanket drive, a 5K race, dining out fundraisers, all to raise money for a variety of charitable causes. Through this nonprofit, they also started a dollar campaign in their fight to end world hunger, promoting that anyone can make a difference pledging just a dollar a month, a week, or a day. Congratulations to the 2017 DECA International Business Plan Championship team of Akshay Rave, Nitin Rave, and Vivek Rave.
You're the elbow holder?
Exactly.
Gosh, I shouldn't. I'm a miss. I'm gonna wait just a second while we let anybody who wishes to our awardees. Please. Awardees? Award recipients? Awardees. Okay. Let's move on to governing board reports. Ms. Ordway, would you like to start?
Sure. Hello, everybody. Thank you for being here and not leaving. I spent some time at the Capitol last week. I will tell you that it wasn't a very happy time. I'm hoping that we can get our public informed to understand what these expansion vouchers really do mean to the fate of public school and the funding or lack there of it. Let's see, I attended the Asper luncheon, which I'll let maybe Dr. Weidenheimer and Ms. Fisher want to go well into who received awards on that, but that was a very lovely place to go. I did hang out with Mrs. O'Brien on Friday. We started off at Desert Sage for a carnival, moved over to Barry Goldwater for their car show, and ended up at the most exquisite art show I think I've been to since last year, which would have been the Deer Valley High School art show. The creativity in all mediums was impressive, and I can see that some of that was already bought by someone. There were certain items that I was thinking about, but I guess it's good. And my governing board service project each year is the prom dresses, so tomorrow night is my last open house at Goldwater for the ladies and gentlemen to come. I'll be there from 6:00 to 8:00 in room 612. Is that the right room? I think that's the right room. Anyway, and after that, it'll be by appointment only, but I do want to thank all of the high schools for keeping the racks out all year long. I have probably between 800 and 1,200 dresses, and I have the opportunity this year to open up to pilot with Deer Valley Middle School and Desert Sky Middle School to offer them promotion dresses. So I'm very excited about that. Thank you for your support.
Ms. O'Brien.
Thank you. Along with the events that Mrs. Ordway already mentioned, I had the pleasure of attending the Deer Valley Business and Community Partner Meeting where we got to hear from Alyssa Seeley, Mountain Ridge High School graduate who is also, oh, and an ASU graduate, sorry, go Devils. She was a 2016 Paralympic gold medal winner, and she was an incredible, incredibly inspirational speaker. What an awesome, I think, event for all of us that were able to attend, including our business partners. And was fortunate enough to be able to spend a little bit of time with the Computer Science Education Committee. I'm very thankful to the staff and the community members who are working hard on how we're going to integrate coding in grades K through 12. So that was very impressive about how far they've come along. I was able to job shadow with athletic trainer Jessica Rushford at Deer Valley High School on an afternoon where she had two softball games, four baseball games, a three-team track meet, two indoor men's volleyball matches, and ladies sand volleyball going on. So I was exhausted after a couple of hours, and I left before she was done, I'm not going to lie. So thank you to all the athletic trainers who take care of our student athletes and make sure not just our student athletes, but as well as other districts' athletes remain healthy and have someone there to treat them in case they need them. And finally, the last thing I'll touch on is the CTE Annual Program Evaluation, which is a combination of getting to see businesses who are working with our district and hearing from staff members who are working with our students. These folks provide students with case studies and career experiences to prepare themselves for their post-high school life, and it's a phenomenal thing to hear what our kids get to do and can be exposed to. And I really look forward to a time when more parents, and I really do hate to date myself, but back in my day, CTE was for kids who were not going to college. And we were kind of declaring winners and losers back in the 80s and 90s with those kinds of things. And it is so exciting to see that we are offering job opportunities to kids who maybe are not college-bound right now, but are definitely going to be successful. So I'm so thankful to all of our staff and our business folks who participate in providing those experiences that they need to help them be successful after high school. So thank you, there's so much going on, and thank you all for hanging in there till the very end.
Ms. Tweedy.
Oh, I don't have a report.
Ms. Frank.
Well, I don't have a long report. I did receive an email from a constituent, a parent in the district, who expressed concerns about teacher salaries. Obviously, I've received emails from teachers in the past, but this was the first parent email that I received regarding teacher salaries and indicating that this parent felt that should be a priority in the budget. So that's it for my report.
I would like to try and keep all of my board reports mostly positive, but I too received the, or it may not be the same email, but I too received an email from a constituent. What concerned me more about the email was that the information in it was inaccurate. That, and it concerned me, not that it was inaccurate, that they wanted teachers to be paid more, we all do, but the information that the individual I, that had emailed me, had was not accurate, which really let me understand that we need to do a better job at communicating out. I did respond back to them with more information regarding school finance and budgets and where we're at and what our contracts are. The other thing is, it's a positive and a not. I was ecstatic this weekend when I went up to look at the art show to see the technique that our students are using. Some of the artwork is just beyond beautiful. These students have skill that it's just as amazing to see, but there were a few pieces that I was very concerned with the content. And whether that's a board thing, or an administration thing, or a teacher thing, or a standards thing, I don't know. But it concerned me because the ESA's passed, the legislature, the privatization of schools, the school vouchers. And it just concerns me that perhaps things we're doing is allowing that to happen. We need to feature how fabulous public schools are and how wonderful they are for our students. So I don't know that that's anything that would have anything to do with us, I just know that as a citizen and as a mom, I really, I love that our students are being taught fabulous things, but I think along with that, we have to teach them citizenship and I don't want to say right from wrong, or morals, or ethics, because some of that's not our, but there's some things that just are not for public consumption, or sometimes are not even for our own eyes. So perhaps setting the example in what we do may be the way to go, so. But the upside is, our students are fabulous artists, both their ceramic pieces and their drawings and their paintings, and some of the photography was just, you could have sworn you were in the picture, so. Anyone who gets an opportunity to look at our students' artwork, please take it. That's it for me. Dr. Weidenheimer.
Thank you, President Fisher. I don't have a report tonight, so we can go straight to fiscal and business services.
Mr. McLareno.
President Fisher, member of the board, members of the board, and Dr. Weidenheimer, we have three reports to share with you this evening, and the first of which is our enrollment report. And we're showing through, consistent with the reports that we've presented for probably the past three months, about a seven-tenths of a percent decline in students, which I think was exactly the same number last month. So before I move on to the financial, I'll just make sure there aren't any questions regarding the enrollment report. Seeing none? The MNO report for March is included in the packet, showing a carryforward amount projected to be $880,000. The share, that carryforward amount is derived from what we consider attrition through unfilled positions or vacancies that have accumulated over the school year. And month-over-month, that is approximately $80,000 over where we were in February of 2017. Year-over-year, it's more than double. Last year, we were right at about $405,000 at this time. So we are trending better, but certainly the increases that we've seen month-over-month have certainly slowed down, which is typical this time of the year as more of the information becomes solidified for the school year as we work towards the latter part of our fiscal year. I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the March reports before I move on. The third report we have is just an update on the fiscal year 18 budget development. And please be careful with what you've been handed, there's a printed document, one-page document. I'm asking you to be careful with it because the ink may not be dry on this. This was just printed while you guys were working in the session just before this meeting started. The negotiation solution team met this afternoon and has created a list of NST priorities for the options, or those things that aren't currently included in the budget list, and so they have been ranked on this sheet. This is hot off the press, as I mentioned, and we wanted to share with you kind of some of the thinkings of the negotiation solution team. Wanted to also speak a little bit after we go through the list of some timelines and what kind of we were thinking in terms of presenting this formally for the board to consider as we move forward. Before I go through the list, this does not include any of the classroom site fund increases that would be affecting our teachers. That is calculated separately, the way we have agreed upon language, so any increase that we have presented here is for all employees. In addition to that, the teachers would receive another increase because the classroom site fund allocation was shared at the end of March, and that allocation is going up from $332 per weighted student count to an amount greater than that. Either $367 if you want the ongoing revenue, or $389 includes some one-time revenue, so we need to make sure that we have a provision for those things that won't be a continuing amount. So there's a $19 difference between those two amounts, but those amounts are calculated separately and provided to teacher increases separately from what's being presented here. And then finally, this does not include any legislative changes. As we continue some of our efforts down at the legislature, we understand that there will be an increase for education salaries, probably specifically going to be teachers. That is not included in this, and obviously, as that information becomes known, we'll certainly be able to consider that in our budget development for fiscal year 18. Don't have a good timeframe to share with you about when the legislature would likely wrap up this session. We would hope that the budget might be done sometime yet in April, but that's yet to be determined at this point in time. I wish I had more control over that, to be honest with you, but I don't. So with those caveats, I just wanted to share the thinking of the negotiation solution team, and again, this is work that was done just at 6 o'clock this evening. So the first four priorities, what we did is we broke up the salary increase into quarter percent increases so that we could provide for a salary increase, but not an all-or-nothing situation. It could be done in smaller increments, and so the NST agreed that the first 1% or the first four priorities on their list were to provide an increase to all employees at 1%. Items 5, 6, and 7, the way the negotiation solution team discussed it this afternoon, would not have an impact on the MNO budget. So I want to give thanks to the group for thinking creatively. Those three options could be handled with either language changes and/or with leveraging the classroom site fund, providing for more of the classroom site fund, and maybe specifically the menu monies within the classroom site fund to address the specific needs that were interests of the group collectively. And just so that, for the benefit of the audience, that's addressing the starting teacher pay, that's item number 5, and certainly making sure that we don't leapfrog any existing employees. Proposition 206, classified compensation compression, the thinking there is to create language about how the classified increases are granted, so anybody that's going to receive a proposition 206 increase would be excluded from the 1% increase because they're going to get an increase when the proposition 206 requirement comes into play on January 1st, and then taking the balance that would have been applied to them and applying it to anybody that makes over $12 an hour. That will help move those people at the top of the schedule, or those people that make more than $12, and if we continue that over the next three years, at least provide some separation from the mandatory increases in Prop 206. So anybody making greater than $12 an hour would realize more than 1%. Anybody making less than $10.50, again, this has not been fully vetted, would only get their Prop 206 increase. That can be worked out in language and wouldn't require any more money, but just would help deal with the compression that we're going to have to address. It's not as big of a problem at $10.50, but as we move through the ratchet increases, it gets progressively more of an issue when it goes from $10.50 to $11, and then the following year goes from $11 to $12. So we might have to do something more in a future year. This at least addresses it in a small way for this upcoming year. Item number 7 was the hard-to-fill addenda for 7th and 8th grade math and science teachers. We also thought that the menu monies from the classroom site fund that have been allocated for other purposes could be reallocated to meet this need, and just to put a dollar amount on it, it's just over $200,000 for those hard-to-fill addendas, they're $2,000 apiece. Moving through the list, item 8 was the additional school-based administration support. Item 9, the front office staffing recommendation from that work group. Item 10 was hard-to-fill and a halftime release for our nurses. Item 11, equitable performance pay for all certified staff. Number 12 was the additional lunch monitor time at elementary schools. Just an interesting side note about number 12, one of the comments that was shared by several people is they thought they would have a hard time even staffing that. They feel it's necessary, but that was part of the discussion, interesting enough. 13 and 14 would be an additional salary increase if we were able to find those funds, and again, the running total shows that we would have a $4 million need to generate. And then finally, item 15 is some specific lead positions for our psychologist and speech staff so that they would have full release. Currently, the leads receive an addenda and they actually carry a caseload as well at the same time. So we were able to rank all 15 of those items that were previously shared as just a list in no particular order. And then we did have some conversations about budget options to help fund that. You can see that we have at the bottom of the page there, $2.3 million in revenue to help offset the budget deficit as well as fund some of those increases. And we have a couple lines there we're waiting to fill in. One of the things we did talk about today, and I want to be cautious about getting into too much detail here because they did ask us not to include it on the list, but as evidence of how much we're looking at any option available to us, we did talk about class size as one option, increasing class size to generate revenue. It was not an option that we felt comfortable presenting to the board, so. But we are looking at multiple ways of trying to create a way to fund as many of these things as possible. So that's the work from today. In terms of timeline, there is only two regularly scheduled board meetings between now and the end of school. That would be April 25th and May 9th. So it is our intention to bring a recommendation to the board that may not be So, it is our intention to bring a recommendation to the board that may not be fully vetted with all the language changes and everything else, but hopefully for a preview item on April 25th so that the board could formally consider a salary recommendation at the May 9th meeting. That will allow us to at least have that information before we start into the summer months because the second May board meeting has been moved to May 30th, which is after the end of the school year and after many of those employees would be under contract with us. So, in order for us to share this information with those employees before they do whatever they end up doing for those summer, I call it weeks now instead of months because it seems such a short period of time anyhow, we'd love to have that be considered by the board prior to that May 30th board meeting. And in honor of the preview and then following it up with the action item at the following meeting, that would put us on that timeline unless the board wanted to consider some other special meeting to consider this or the budget in general as well. So, we'll leave it at that and be happy to answer any questions also about the list itself.
Ms. Ordway?
On number seven, what exactly, what monies from the Classroom Site Fund were we thinking about using?
President Fisher, Ms. Ordway, those funds would be the menu monies from Fund 13, sometimes referred to as the district share of the Fund 13 menu monies.
Right. I, I understand what it is, but what are we using that money for now?
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood the question.
That's okay.
The, so, those funds are used in some cases for some one-time expenses. And there's an increase in the Classroom Site Fund allocation, as I mentioned before. So, part of that would be funded out of the increase that would be the district share of the menu money from Classroom Site Fund. So, just the fact that the, the allocation is going up or is being increased would generate a portion of those dollars.
Okay. Because I, I'm just interested in what we would be, as you use your pie, it's only so big, and if we need something for something else, then the other pieces get smaller. I want to make sure that we're going to discuss something, that we're going to talk about doing with that, if that is actually something that you guys are talking about.
Certainly. And, and we re, we actually evaluate the needs within what we refer to as the Academic Services Budget, which includes the menu money of, of the Classroom Site Fund, the district share of that. And so, that would be something that we would just certainly consider. To, to put this in perspective, again, that item number seven was just over $200,000. And just some spitballing conversations during the NST meeting today, we were also talking about potentially $200,000 for item five as well. But again, we need to do some work on that to make sure that that's a reasonable number. So, it'd be $400,000 of which the district share of the Classroom Site Fund for this year, without the increase that's expected for next year, was $1.3 million. So, it's a, i- it's a fair percentage.
Okay. I, I just am very interested in making sure that when we're working with these numbers, that if there's something that we're planning on not doing or, or whatever, that that is absolutely out in the open, so it's not a surprise when we have a preview. Done.
Any other? Ms. O'Brien?
On item 10 and the nursing compensation, there's a reference to a half, a .5 FTE release. Can you explain that to me? Sorry.
Certainly. President Fisher, Ms. O'Brien, we have a lead nurse for the district that helps oversee many of the activities of our nurses. And that person is a nurse at one of our campuses with no release time. So, she, in order to make herself available, it's very difficult because of the responsibility she has on our own campus. This would provide a halftime release for her to do some of those other duties as our district-wide lead nurse.
Okay.
Ms. Tweedy?
On item six, wait, yes, it's item six. So, when the minimum wage increased, I guess now everyone who's not making minimum wage is now closer to the wage of a minimum wage employee. You know, it, it basically would compress anybody who's not making minimum wage by the amount of the increase. So, did you set parameters? I mean, how did you determine who's compressed?
President Fisher, Ms. Tweedy, the, anybody that did not receive a salary increase as a result of the Prop 206 would be result, would in, and end up in a, being compressed from, from all those that did because the salary increases are so great. At 50 cents an, an hour, the, the increments, at least for the, the next two, everybody that doesn't receive that 50 cents, 1% would not generate 50 cents per hour. So, everybody else is going to be compressed. So, anybody that doesn't, to answer your question more directly, anybody that doesn't receive a Prop 206 increase is going to have, feel the result of compression. Those that get the Prop 206 increase are going to get a larger increase than, than any other employee.
How did we seek input to come up and rank these priorities? Where, did we check? How, how did we decide what items appeared? I, I understand it was part of the, how did, how did the NST team gather input for this?
Again, this was part of a process that we just went through between four and six o'clock. So, it was just the NST group itself. This has not been shared. This is just the initial ranking of, of, of this list. This list has been part of the presentations that we've, that we-
I guess I'm just saying, did, did you receive any other priorities that, for NST to consider throughout the district from other employee? I'm just curious if there's any other priorities. I, I mean, I've heard priorities from other people that aren't on here, so I, I don't know. And maybe there was a process for eliminating them. I'm just curious.
There, the, the process is the Negotiation Solution Team is, is a representative group of each of those groups. And so, any recommendation should have been shared with the NST representation. There were surveys that each of the groups did to gather the information, and then that developed the list, which has been shared out on multiple occasions. And then today's work was just the NST itself ranking the list, the previously developed list.
Okay. Thank you. I just, I was just curious about that. So, all the groups sent surveys out to the whole district, whether you were a member or not, and got input?
President Fisher, Ms. Tweedy, I, I know that's true of the Certified and Classified Group, which is, you know, most inclusive. I'm not sure of the DVBLT, but I, I'm seeing some head nodding. So, yes, that included everybody that's a member of the administrative group as well, DVBLT.
And did the NST Committee reach consensus on the items that are presented to us tonight?
President Fisher, Ms. Frank, yes, the, they reached consensus on the ranking that you see here, but nothing more than that. So, I don't want to indicate that any sort of funding level was established as to, you know, how far down the, the list we would, we would get to. That would be the next thing that we would present to the board, is that the NST would recommend funding, you know, priorities one through seven, or one through 10, or whatever the numbers might be.
Okay.
And that's how we would intend to present it to the board from here.
Ms. O'Brien?
Mr. McGlorino, we had seen a draft, oh my gosh, demographers report earlier this year that reflect our enrollment numbers to go down one more year, which isn't in these budget numbers. What I'm trying to remember is after that, are we, do we have a projection for student enrollment to increase? Do you, you know?
President Fisher, Ms. O'Brien, yes. So, included in this is an estimate of next year's students, which we are projecting about a 1% decline in student population for next year, and it's included in our budget plan. So, in the $1.6 million number you see in the revenue changes at the top, that's actually two years of decline. So, it's the decline that we experienced this year, the seven tenths of a percent we just spoke about, and approximately 1% decline for next year because we will be on current year funding for next year pending any other legislative changes. The demographer indicated in his report that we would see a slight decline next year and the following year, so the 17, 18 year and the 18, 19 year. It's not till the 19, 20 year that things either level off, or we might see some slight growth at that point in time.
Thank you.
I'm going to take kind of on a circular back a couple. When we start looking at that wage compression, because we're having to raise these up, how close are we in our salaries to find ourselves in a situation where we have a supervisor who at the end of the year is making less than their employees? I know some of that gets-
Yeah. President Fisher, for the current year, and even at $10.50, I mean, they certainly are getting closer, but I don't think that there would be any supervisor that would be making the same amount of money as anybody that they're supervising. But as we get closer to $12, I think there is, there are certainly some people that would be making the same wage. And one of the concerns that we need to address is the fact that at, at that wage, they'll make a decision to be able to do whatever job they prefer to do the most, as opposed to have a salary differentiation for certain responsibilities that may take a different skillset. So, this is a baby step the, that we're proposing in this option, is to be able to only provide the Prop 206 increase for those people that are making less than $10.50 an hour. We do realize that we're going to have to address this in a greater sense in future years, certainly.
We need to plan for it and, and watch it because it's that, I mean, when you get in that situation where your staff's making significantly more than you, it takes a hit in productivity, let's just say.
Oh, certainly.
Any other questions?
Ms. Tweedy?
I, I would just like to say, I would hope that we would never consider increasing class sizes to balance this budget, so that, I would just like to put that comment out there.
I just have to be wholeheartedly. And I would also agree.
I got one more question. Going back to the nurse line, I think it was seven, oh, how many, if you know, how many openings do we have that are not filled for nurses that we haven't had filled?
I think it's three, four? And then we have some contract-
Four from the back row.
Okay. Four from, four from the back row. Thank you for-
The back row says four. And out of those four, and, and out of those four, what building configurations are they lacking, the nurse in? All elementary, K6 or K8, or both? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Jim, you're officially off the hook, I believe.
Thank you.
Scott?
Yes, ma'am. Not one of these deals. President Fisher, members of the governing board, I get the opportunity, it's my pleasure to give you an update on our Assessment Strategy Project, which is going to focus mostly on the first Stakeholder Committee meeting that we held last month. And I know we have, we have mentioned this project to you in, in response to some other reports in the past, but we've never given you a formal update. So, before I get into the Strategy Committee meeting, I thought maybe it's just been a second, looking at the Assessment Strategy Project as a whole, with a couple of bolas to, to remind you that this is something that is through achieve.org. We became part of a national network and actually met with several other school districts at a convening to talk about our approach and the direction and the, and achieve.org's kind of process for the project. Locally, we decided on a structure of teams, which included a core leadership team, which included Dr. Gallagher and Kathy Borges and Mary Beth Hyland and myself. And that team then would lay out, start to lay out content and process for our set of content experts, which is primarily made up of our curriculum instruction and assessment specialists. And then together, we would put together material to put, bring before a larger stakeholder committee and ask them to meet with us three, or maybe four times, but probably three times to really come away with recommendations. We then decided to, to break this into phases as it was recommended by achieve.org, as well as a couple of other school districts that we met with, to have a Phase One where we focused on just the required district level, state level, and national level assessments. So, what's not in that phase, clearly, are assessments that a, a school leader might require and assessments that a school teacher in their individual classroom might also give to their students. We realize we, there's other phases are going to be necessary, and that's one of our takeaways actually from our first meeting. We had laid out some sub-phases then for this Phase One process. The Reflect and Plan component there, you see there, is actually part of achieve.org's process. And the Core Leadership Team did a Reflect and Plan document, and we shared it with Stakeholder Committee. It's actually one of their homework projects to bring back to the next meeting to, to talk about what they saw in there. We then conducted an inventory of all of our assessments, and we are now right at this kind of engaging stakeholder section and getting ready actually to move into the evaluate and analyze phase with our, our stakeholder committee. This is the Stakeholder Committee. I know it's small and it's a lot up there. It's only meant to reflect the, the diversity of, of the stakeholders that we have. You can see the Core Leadership and the Content Experts, and then you can see administrators, teachers, students from all, from, from many levels, business partners, community members, and some post-secondary representation also. So, it's about, I think, 45-ish people. And we have board member on there too, and are welcome to, we would welcome additional board members at our future meetings. So, this is our first Stakeholder Committee meeting. This is kind of basically the agenda for that meeting, on March 15th last month. We spent a little bit of time doing a project overview, what are the goals, what are our processes, what are the things achieve.org is requiring. Then we actually spent some time with an assessment matrix that we had built with the content experts, and we, and we, as a, as a committee, have some takeaways from that matrix. Then we spent a little time on an exercise that we termed Assessment Literacy. What are some common terms, concepts, skillsets that people would need to know in general that may not, not, maybe parents or business partners or community members might not know that, that we need to teach people. And then, then we spent some time on the actual inventory items. And then after we had a chance to look at the inventory items without the data yet, just the items and their definitions, we came back to Assessment Literacy to say, okay, after looking at the items, what else do you need to know? So, after Dr. Gallagher opened the meeting with kind of a, a introduction and allowing everybody else to introduce themselves and kind of what our goals and, and what this project is about, she asked everybody, in one word, what does the word "assessment" mean to you right now, tonight? And this is what it came to. And the little word cloud thing we have here, you'll see it goes everywhere from magical to evil. So, those were the, the things that people mentioned in the Stakeholder Committee meeting. So, I'd mentioned we did an assessment matrix. This is a slide that Jim McGlorino asked me to put. No, I'm just kidding. Sorry. This is just to give you a feeling for, okay, it's a big matrix. It's got a lot of assessments on there. It's got all the grades across. I'm going to go right to this one next. But this is what the matrix actually looks like. You can see chronologically what assessments are given during what months and what content area they're in. And then I've showed a snapshot of kindergarten, first grade, fifth grade, and 10th grade. All the grade levels are actually represented on the big matrix. And if there's an X in any of those boxes, the, those students were required to take that assessment. And then to the right of this matrix is the amount of time it's, it's expected to administer the assessment. And we, and we usually capture both a minimum and maximum time. When we did any analysis, we always use the maximum time. So, all of the assessments that we are required to take, either the district requires, the state requires, or the nation requires our students to take, are meant to be reflected on this assessment, assessment matrix. We put the matrix together once, and then went and looped back around with the content experts, the, the curriculum instruction specialist, and said, is this correct? Are these the right assessments? Are they all captured? Are the right grades captured? Is the right timeframe captured? And, and made sure it was right before we talked to the Stakeholder Committee. The findings from this matrix, the raw data from this matrix, basically show that on average, we require 18.3 assessments for general, gen ed student across all the grade levels. Little lower in primary, a little higher in fourth, fifth, and eighth grade, drops back down then in high school. So, that was one way for us as a group to look at the number of assessments, 18.3 in the school year. The second way we looked at it was, well, how much time are we actually spending on required assessments? We, again- We, again, I used the maximum end of the administration range for this. And on average, we take eighteen point one hours worth of assessments throughout the school year. Again, dramatically lower in primary, you see that sloping increase from fourth through eighth grade, and then dropping down in high school. Well, of that eighteen point one hours, what proportion of the school year is that, actually? So the third way we looked at it is, what percent of the year do we spend taking required national, state, and district assessments? And you can see it's about one point seven percent of the school year, again, on average, with the same trends from primary to fourth through eighth and high school. After we spent some time discussing these and looking through these, even at individual tables and thinking about the numbers, we as a group sat down with the stakeholder committee and said, okay, what are your, what are your takeaways, what do you, what do you see going on with this data? And what are some of the implications of these results? We captured those as, as they were being talked about. And these are the quotes, are the, literally the items that the members from the stakeholder committee stated in the meeting. You have another sheet of paper that looks a little bit like this, it looks exactly like this, actually. This is, this captures the quote also, but then also captures from the, from the core leadership team, kind of what was the conversation about, what was really the spirit of that quote, and, and kind of a little more detail about it. And I'm just going to take the first one, for example. There was an average of one day per week testing, that really was intended, I mean, if you took the average, a student takes one test per week throughout the school year. Well, in actuality, if you look at then our kind of interpretation of it, the average number of assessments is eighteen point three, ranging from nine for kindergarten to twenty-five for fourth, fifth, and eighth graders. With thirty-six weeks in a school year, eighteen point three is really an average of one test every two weeks. Even in fourth, fifth, and eighth grade, where they're the highest, it's average every one and a half weeks. However, we did realize, and we did have this conversation, that the distribution is not even throughout the year, and this only includes phase one assessments, only the required district, national, and state assessments. And you see some other items on there, doesn't include time to prepare for the test, time to, to grade the tests for teachers, and some other considerations that we would want to make sure we're looking at as we do the analysis phase from the inventory table. But we thought these were very interesting outcomes, very interesting implications. This was kind of from the committee, the things that we wanted, is a board to see and to report out to the public. The rest of the meeting, we spent some time on literacy, basically with this construct, what do people need to know to understand assessments? Better make sure we are at least at a base level understanding in order to analyze the data. We then looked at the assessment inventory table. These are the, these are the items, or the field items that are on the table. Your second document you have, which looks like this, is, is an example of each of those innovative inventory field items. The next thing that the assess, the stakeholder committee team is going to see, is going to see all of these assessments with all of those fields completed. And then we were, we're working on a protocol then for the team to do the real analysis around base of what we know about these assessments, and what we require our district to do, what do we want to come away with, as we're going to call it considerations for then the core leadership team to take back and recommend to executive cabinet. So our next meeting is next week, April eighteenth. And as I just said, we're going to focus on analysis of the assessment inventory, and I would like to invite you to come, spaces are available for additional board members or additional community members for that matter, and we'll answer any questions if you have them.
Ms. O'Brien? No? Okay. Anybody else have questions? No? Darcy? I'm Ms. Tweedy.
So the percentage of the school day, the percentage, that was calculated with every school day being six hours, or do you account for early release days and late start days?
Yes. President Fisher, Ms. Tweedy, this is, so you're kind of seeing the footnote down there, this is using the maximum administration time. I used a hundred and seventy-three days with fourteen early release or half days, so I took off seven from the hundred and eighty, and I used six hours of classroom time. And that's one point seven percent then of the school year is spent taking these required assessments.
And is there, there's a plan then to add the school level testing into this, the time devoted, you know? Now, is there also a plan to create, I guess, a matrix of what data's obtained, like which assessments are summative, which ones are formative, and see if there's an overlap in the, in the data we're getting through some of these assessments?
President Fisher, Ms. Tweedy, I'm going the wrong way here. But to answer your first question, there is an intent definitely to go to phase two and phase three. The plan is probably still being formed in our head of how to get there and do that in, in the right way. And I guess I won't go here, but, went too fast. So you can see here, I believe all of the items you mentioned are on here. There's, you know, kind of what type of, what is intended use of the assessment? Is it predictive, is it for growth, is it for placement, is it a screener? There's a type of assessment, is it a summative, is it an interim benchmark, is it formative? How long does it take to take the assessment, what is the assessment window is on here? Did you mention any other items that I haven't captured here?
Question?
Ms. Frank? How did you arrive at the minimum, maximum time that it would take a student, I'm assuming an average student, to complete the assessment?
President Fisher, Ms. Frank, I, I relied on our content experts. So the curriculum instruction assessment specialist, who, who ran the teams that built the vast majority of these assessments, they, they're, one of their responsibilities, as I gave that matrix back to them, was say, okay, are these times right? They originally filled the time in, in an inventory we had done a couple of years ago, so I had a starting point, but when I gave it back to them, that was one field. I said, this, you need to make sure this is correct.
Okay. And is there a plan to look at how assessments impact the school schedule? For example, late start at high schools? I know there's frequently, or there's very often assessments that affect the whole high school scheduling. Is that something that's planned to be looked at?
Yeah, President Fisher, Ms. Frank, we definitely, in, in general, the school schedule is probably something good for us to get on our radar screen, but we definitely understood and appreciate and, and plan to address that it's not, like I mentioned before, it's not a random thing throughout the year. It very heavily impacts, for example, high school at the end of each semester. The state required assessments very heavily impact, you know, schools for a clump of time in the month of April, and, and resulting in things like different schedules and interruptions to students.
Something else I would be interested in seeing is how many of the tests are computer-based, and how much time is being devoted in computer labs? And I know it's, it's not, may not be an issue with the high schools where you've gone the one-to-one devices. And I, I do understand that Deer Valley has increased their technology since, you know, the two years that I, I've left the district. But I would be curious to see how much time in computer labs is being used solely for testing, and, and so that those devices aren't available, particularly at the elementary level, those devices are then not available for students to use for other research purposes or, or projects.
Yes, President Fisher, Ms. Frank, that, there is an item on the inventory field for that, and this doesn't have a definition or example, but I think it's type of administration, and it could be paper, pencil, computer, teacher asks, student tells, things like that. As a matter of fact, all of our assessments that are required by, except for science aims and kindergartners and first graders are computer-based in our district. And also, if you'll notice, on the implications that we take away as a stakeholder committee, one of the items was, what impact does this have on computer availability for teaching and learning other than just taking assessments?
Thank you.
I just have to say, you know, one of the things that, that this, this work is really good work that they're doing, it's really interesting. One of the first exercises the committee did is they had us guess how many hours we thought students were taking tests, or how much time. And we were to line up, and our lowest versus our highest, and it's kind of hilarious to see a room full of people who should know some of this information, all kind of trying to add up this many hours, and you're counting on fingers, and you're writing little numbers down, and the starts, and you start watching people cross over each other. And, and what it told me is that it's really important that we do follow through with seeing what this looks like, and I would encourage any other board members to join in this. It, it was a very informative session, it was very well done. It was nice to see that I wasn't the only one who thought one thing and, and then realized it was slightly different. And it's important that our stakeholders see that we are, we're not just mindlessly testing kids, we're mindfully seeing what will benefit our students. And so I look forward to our next one. Dr. Galligan, again, I have not done my homework, so...
Oh, one, one final question?
So I will, but...
What, what time is the next meeting on April eighteenth? I apologize, I wasn't able to attend, I was recovering from my allergies, which you may recall from a few board meetings ago.
President Fisher, Ms. Frank, five-thirty to seven-thirty, all of our meetings are five-thirty to seven-thirty. On your board packet document, you have the wrong date. It says April fifteenth, it's on April eighteenth, so next week...
So it's not the day before Easter?
Yeah, and it's not on Saturday.
Awesome.
And I will send out a reminder about the homework tomorrow.
All right, thank you very much.
It's, it is on your board calendar and vibe, too, on the correct day.
And on tax day.
Fine or done?
All right.
Okay. All right, so I guess we're ready to move on to action item, which was nine B. I move that the governing board accept the administration's recommendation for the principal at Sunrise Elementary School.
Anybody have any, or can you need a second?
Second.
Does anybody have any, you know, comments we wanted, you know, just, I don't know?
I don't know, I say we vote on it, so she can stop sweating.
All right.
And then comment.
Aye.
Aye. Welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you for joining.
You do know that you'll have to move to that side or that side, because that's where they all sit. Just saying.
Okay, so then we're ready to move on to item...
Karen, you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting if you don't want to. We are so happy that you've joined us. Let's, let's do one more round...
Don't run yet, Karen, we're applauding you again.
Karen.
She's joining us, we're very pleased.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you. Are we ready to move on to seven A? All right. I move that the governing board accept the administration's recommendation to approve the two thousand seventeen eighteen Certified Performance Pay Plan.
Second.
President Fisher, there are no changes to the recommendation that administration has given.
Thank you. Any questions? Not on this, not on this item.
Questions?
That's not on this item. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And moving on to item eight A. I move that the governing board accept the administration's recommendation to approve the human resources changes.
Second.
No. Okay, you have the wrong order, or what?
Oh, you skipped a couple.
Did I skip one again? Oh, I am so sorry. The, I move that the governing board accept the administration's recommendation to approve consent agenda items eight A through eight G.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now you're on nine A.
All right, now I move that the governing board accept the administration's recommendation to approve the human resources changes.
And now I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Nay.
So we're on to C. I move that the governing board approve the travel for governing board members and the superintendent to attend the Arizona School Boards Association, ASBA Summer Leadership Institute on June eighth through tenth, two thousand seventeen, in Flagstaff, Arizona.
I second that.
This is the event that we had talked about earlier, that we're hopeful that all of us can attend. I, the reason we put in superintendent, I know Dr. V is leaving us, but hopefully we will have named a new superintendent by then, and possibly they could join us. But even if not, if James is willing, I would like for him to attend, because it's important for the board to work with a superintendent and have that glue to help pull the board together. Yes, we work together, that's just my opinion. That's why we had put the superintendent on as well as the board. If anybody has any comments, or...
What is the projected cost for this?
Do we have that again? Of, I will tell you of them, this is the least expensive.
That would be times six people, plus hotel accommodations, possibly reimbursement for gas, so...
Which is tomorrow, by the way, the registration. That's why it's today.
Well, I, I mean, have, I have to be, be honest, this is, this is my concern. We did spend money to send three board members on, to Denver, to the national conference. I know that board members attended ASBA's annual conference at the Biltmore. I have a concern with approving, spending money, more money for board travel when we're looking at options like not adopting CTE textbooks. I know I personally voted against a math textbook adoption, which may have made me not popular with math teachers or, or others. So I, I don't feel that personally, I would feel I was being honest if I voted for this when I wasn't willing to vote for other things that are also important. So that's, that's my, my personal take, that's how I feel about it. I certainly understand other board members may not share my opinion or my view, and, and I respect that, but I, I can't support it.
Okay, Ms. Tweedy?
I know initially, we, we did agree to do something together, but then we had the budget study sessions, and... I, I'm also, I guess, uncomfortable with spending any extra money, because I don't think that there's things that are getting addressed in this budget that I would consider more important than this. I, and I agree that math textbooks may, you know, would have been important, but I also didn't support the math textbook because I'm concerned about this budget. And although I know that this expense is not large compared to districts our size, it's just more symbolic that if other people aren't going to be getting things that they want or need, that we wouldn't either, I guess that would be my stance.
Ms. Hartley?
I would, everyone is entitled to their personal opinion, but as the two new members of the board, I think it is something that our public and our constituents would be very pleased to have, a whole trained board that is trained. And I don't consider our professional learning as something extra. I think it makes us a more viable board that knows how to be more fiscally responsible, have a larger lens when we look at things, and just to be that much more informed. I, I don't consider our training as extra, because whatever it is that we learn that can give us a leg up to be proactive and to understand things better is just that much more val, makes us that much more valuable to, to our district and to our constituents, whether it be the students, the parents, the community, the teachers, the staff, whomever, and to each other also. I'm not looking at this as the, the bonding experience, I'm looking at this as the profession... I'm looking at this as the professional takeaways that are going to help propel us through the next year with things such as ESA being passed and all of legal ramifications and things that we need to do to provide some proactivity from, from this board. So that, that's why I think it's important. And if we approve it tonight for all of us to go and then we decide that maybe not all of us are going, I would really like the two of you, if it was possible for you guys to go. So that's my concern is that we, we need to be trained.
Okay, I, I do want to chime in here. I understand significantly, I have a strong understanding on the financial hardships that districts face. And I will tell you that these, the, the, the minimal expense that we are, that we have in our board budget, it is essentially for a year, $5,000, which we never spend, per board member. It's not, it's not significant. But what is significant is the training and the team building that comes out of these events. When I started my career in, in human resources, I received a bachelor's degree in human resource management. When I wanted to go into school finance, I went for a master's in accounting and finance. I would not put a teacher in a classroom that did not have a degree or a teaching certificate. And, and I think it's very important that our board is trained on how to be a board. We need to, we need to understand not just each of our own lens. You know, each of us are going to bring a different lens to, to this dais and to our decisions and our thoughts and our processes and the way we look at data and our legislation. These trainings, which are very vital, are, are important. So I, I would hope that, that all board members would consider attending. Because just like our teachers are expected to be highly qualified, I believe they should expect that their board members are also highly qualified. And this is something that no one of us has.
I, I would like to address. I, I somewhat a little bit resenting the implication that perhaps, I'm not trained. I, I did go to a former AS, an ASBA conference where I sat through seminars and I wasted money on FERPA and IEP law. And I have my bachelor's in education, I have my master's in education, and I'm currently working on a PhD in cognition and instruction. So I don't think it's that, I really have no education about this. I, I did not learn anything about education law. I, I did not already know the last time I went to the conference. So wasn't that, I, I just had some kind of an epiphany while I was there and it was well worth the money. I, I think that I honestly, it was a waste of money and a waste of my time. And I, granted, I don't know everything, but there's a lot of things in education I do know about. When you were discussing PLCs, I've been to numerous PLC trainings. I'm well aware of PLCs. So I'm just not comfortable with that. And I do think, not to say that the training has no value, there's plenty of things that have value we're not going to fund this year, so where do we draw the line?
I would also say, I, my previous comments were not to suggest that I saw no value in, in training for board members. I, I do see the value. And in the best of all possible worlds, I would, would be very happy to approve this. But, you know, and I also went to the ASBA training and also have a master's degree in education. When you look at, again, where do you draw the line? There was, there was the training in December that Darcy and I went to one day and I know that the three of you went to several days. Then there's the training you attended and reported back to us that you attended in Denver. There is the, the session that we had, the team building session that we had back in, I think it was January or February. There was a cost to that. And so, you know, again, where, where do you draw the line? I, I personally can't vote for this when there are other things that we're not going to fund and we're looking at a budget deficit. And it's not that this amount of money would, would fix the budget deficit. I, I understand that. But, you know, in, in all good conscience, I, I'm sorry, I, I can't, I can't vote for it. I can't vote to approve it. And that's, means, means no disrespect to anyone who has a different opinion in any way, shape, or form. This is just where I'm at on this item.
Ms. Hartley?
I just want to say to that point, I, I wasn't, I use my words incorrectly. I wasn't trying to say that you're not trained. There's just, just seems to be lots of things that might help you even further with your all, your experiences that you have already. So I guess we will find value in what we find value in and, and we'll support each other as we go through that, that journey with our new board members, or present board, period.
Absolutely. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No. So we are on action item 9D. I move that the governing board accept the administration's recommendation to award a contract to Raitan LLC for 2017 summer paving and concrete projects in the amount of $744,725.
Any questions for Mr. Maglirino? Do we read, we, we have the, you know, proposal?
President Fisher, members of the board, Dr. Weidheimer, just since we are taking this directly to action item, I just wanted to speak to this, both this item and as well as the next item. We are finding it increasingly more difficult to get some of the projects that we'd like to get done during the summer weeks, as I'm referring to it as now, just due to scheduling conflicts and limited resources. So we are asking the board to consider this as a direct action item. It is 25 miscellaneous paving projects at various locations, 19 concrete improvements at various schools, and would be funded from the 2013 bond proceeds. So these are routine projects that we do each summer. But do appreciate the board's consideration as an action item this evening for this item.
Ms. O'Brien?
On, on the items, Jim, Mr. Maglirino, that are scheduled to occur, are those due to like the scheduled maintenance plans or do we have issues? Can you just give us a broader sense of why the work is required or necessary?
President Fisher, Ms. O'Brien, be happy to do so. Most of the paving projects are, are, or at least the majority of the paving projects are maintenance, where we will come in and fog seal the asphalt to preserve its life and then re-stripe the, the paving so that it will maintain itself over a longer period of time. There are some additions for some paving repairs that are included in, in the, in the scope of those where we might have had a paving breakdown of some sort. When it comes to concrete, a lot of this is ADA access and also replacement of cracked concrete that might create a tripping hazard or creating some walkways that are to the benefit of the, of the campus itself that weren't paved previously or weren't in concrete previously.
Thank you so much.
Any additional? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to action item 9E. I move that the governing board accept the administration's recommendation to award a contract to Skyline Builders and Restoration, Inc. for 2017 summer interior and exterior painting projects in the amount of $1,312,491.46.
Second. Any other information, Jim? Or you caught it all in the last one?
President Fisher, members of the board, Dr. Weidheimer, if I might. This is six exterior painting projects and five interior painting projects. One of those is in exterior of a, of a high school, Deer Valley High School. And we have two interior painting of high schools. And I mention that because our high schools are so much larger. Both Sandra Day O'Connor and Barry Goldwater High School are scheduled on the interior. I should have mentioned this previously, both of these contracts are cooperative 1 GPA contracts. But do appreciate again the board considering this so that we can secure the, this work to be done over the limited amount of time that we have each summer. So be happy to answer any additional questions.
Any additional questions? Ms. O'Brien?
Again, is, is it, are these based on a schedule that we keep for maintenance from the state or from our own standards?
President Fisher, Ms. O'Brien, these are our own standards and typically that is a seven-year rotation. So we target a seven-year rotation for painting both the interior and the exterior of the, of the campus. So that, and so that could be six years, could be eight years, but the, we, we try and target around seven years.
You? Ms. Frank?
Oh, no, she asked my question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hey. Action item 9F. I move that the governing board review, discuss, and consider revisions to identified board policy.
Hang on a second.
Second.
Give me to make a comment real quick before you start. For board members as well as for those in the audience, we have received from ASBA a very large update required by law, legal changes and legislative changes. We shared with you that we have targeted the month of June for first reading and second reading. And so we backed up into what policies would we like to discuss, want to discuss, but aren't required to, to look at any adjustments to those policies. What we're, what we would hope to get tonight would be some guidance on these policies and then we're going to go to work on that. The, the process that we use is we take recommendations or we consider changes to policies. We, because we've generated it and ASBA didn't, we run it through our legal counsel. So we are clear and we're certain that we are consistent with law and legislative action. And then you get first reading on June 13th, second reading on June 27th. So we're a little ahead of the game on this one, so no decisions are required, no agreements are done, need to be conducted tonight. But we need some guidance as to what, what is of interest. These 14 policies were identified by each individual on the board. So we have no idea what you have in mind. And so in order to go to work on it, we've got to hear from the person that requested it, should they want to change.
Okay, since we did all submit, just, just to point out, and I'm sure we all are aware of this, but just to point out, when you see where it has a copyright, that's because it is the standard language from ASBA and is unchanged. So on the items where you see that they do not have that copyright symbol, that means a board somewhere along the line, the last board or, or prior boards, chose to deviate from the ASBA recommended standard policy, okay? And we're, we don't have to decide on changes today. The, the purpose of bringing these forward, some of this we've already discussed, that we want to make changes in our initial board retreat that we had in January. And I think that may be why some of them are here. But, but since we did each put them through, I would like to recommend, if the board's so pleased, that we go ahead and just go in the order that they're here on the agenda and whoever it was that put that one forward, just say, you know, basically this is the reason I brought it forward. And then we can decide if it's something we want to explore further or, or yeah, it's just not a good time. Would that be a, an acceptable process for us? So we have BBA, Board Powers and Responsibilities. I just need to know who brought them. Oh, you do. Ms. Hartley?
Hold on one second, let me just pull that back up again. I know these were in order, hold on one second. Did I skip it? No. Oh, that's because I have it right here. Okay, so if you go to, oh, let's see. If you go to page two, this was just to review, not to make any changes, just to make sure that we all understand. I, I wanted to concentrate on the second and third bullets. The second and third bullet points, which is to represent the board and district to the public in a manner that promotes both interest and support, to refer complaints to the proper school authorities and to refrain from individual counsel and action. I didn't want to do any kind of changing it, I just wanted that to be a refresher for, for all of us as I was going through that notes from the conference. I thought that that was a little bit connected to my Budsman interest, that we should kind of review some of them in case we're, we feel that.
So, so you just brought this forward because you wanted to be part of a future review session?
Uh, just a refresher, just to look at, to get, to, to see what each individual board member's thought process are and what those sentences mean to them, to make sure we all could be on the same page. So it's not to change it, it's just to make sure that we all have a, a common understanding of what it means.
I, I guess I would ask that, what do you think it means to give individual counsel?
I, I, I believe we're getting off topic though. This is, the, the purpose of this item is to identify, is that the purpose of any discussion is simply to identify changes. So unless we have somebody that wants to make changes, because this is just for us to go quickly through, so that we can provide them to administration, so that we can move forward.
But without knowing how we're interpreting it, I don't know if I'd want to change it.
Could I make a suggestion that we, like, the, along the lines of, or to Mrs. Hartley's point and I think to what you brought up in the earlier study session, Mrs. Fisher, and in the workshop you'd gone to, that this might be a part of a future study session where we would discuss it and, and review those meetings?
Right, and that's, and that's more my point, is if it's, if it's discussion that we want to do, I believe it would be part of our, of our future, a study session. Or, or a board retreat where we, we go over and, and look at our board ethics and norms. And then at that time, if we decide that there's something off, we can, we can bring it back onto the agenda.
Right, because the instructions were review, discuss, so it was just something I wanted reviewed. I don't need to, so I just wanted to go quickly through what my interest in the policy was. Because I don't think we want to be here for two hours, right?
Right, did, okay, so BBA is not under consideration for changes. We'll bring it forward in the future. BCB, board member conflict of interest, is this a similar, Ms. Hartley?
Yes, that's a similar.
So then we can go ahead and put this one off to a future study session as well. BDB, again, Ms. Hartley?
That again, it's just a review.
Okay. We will move that to a study session. BDG?
Same thing.
Okay, study session. Thank you. Okay, BEDA, this is me, notification of meetings. Let me see what I was looking at. Well, it does have the copyright. I think I pulled this one based on knowledge that these others were coming, I figured it would cross-reference to them. So I think this one can also move off to a study session, because the cha, any change to this would be due to change in the ones that are already moved to a study session. So that we can move. Next one is BED, E-E-D-B. Sorry, I'm a little bit out of order here. This one I brought forward based on our conversation in our, in our retreat, I was trying to think of the word, thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Now, I spent a lot of time looking at what other districts have as far as agendas. This, this one item is specifically how your agenda's built, and what I found in my research, that it generally, when, as you see, this one is not copyrighted, copyrighted, does not have a copyright, yeah. It, so it, it, somewhere along the line, a board member or, or various board members over the years have changed it to, to do what they want. But when we go to put in, one of the things we had discussed was actually adding an area where we had discussion, and we could have the requesting of an item down there with discussion from our notes. But because this is in policy, to do so, we need to change policy. But what I found when I was doing research, I was very, very intrigued by Peoria's policy, BEDB, because their policy basically says that we will form an agenda and that it will follow a structure, but it doesn't detail that, you know, it'll be call to order, pledge of allegiance, roll call, you know, and so I would really like to explore that option because it gives us the ability to make the adjustments that are, are necessary to do business without changing policy every time we want to, we need to do that. You know, I'm currently board president, but that doesn't mean I'll be, be board president next year. And, and for me, it would be more comfortable to call the meeting to order and say, let the record show, all board members are present, let's all rise for the pledge of allegiance. But because we have it in policy like this, I don't have that option. Next year, you know, someone else may have a different order, and the one thing I liked about Peoria's is that it was open, that we could, we could basically move the order of things without policy changes and add things, and, and you do it based on business, it's, it's written very well. So that's what I would like to do, or at least consider with this one.
Wasn't there also a concern, because if we just wanted to talk about something, but it wasn't going to get voted on, or?
That was the discussion piece we were going to add.
Okay.
But we have to either do a policy change to write discussion, or, in my opinion, I think it would really be, it would better serve the board as a whole and future boards if we made it to where it was a functional policy where we had reasonable discretion to make our, our agenda functional.
So are we going to be supplied maybe with Peoria's?
Yes, if everybody's interested, I, the, the thought was, or my thought was, that whoever was going to bring those changes could maybe propose them, give them to Dr. Weitner, and he could put them in the Friday update, so that we have that information.
Well, you, we could certainly do that. Again, you're going to have a preview and action as well, so you'll have four weeks to look at any option that you might want to consider. Some little nuances that you might want to know. I, I, I know this policy well, because this one changed right after I got here. That's where the preview-action concept came from, that, that was the adjustment, as was the standing item in action called Human Resource Changes, because that item used to be in the consent agenda.
Yes.
So this, this happened, this agen, this agenda was created this way during my time. One of the conversations that were, that I think you would, would want to have with, among yourself, is your board reports, because you can't be talking about things that aren't on the agenda, and that's why it's laid specifically out that you talk about site visits, governmental relations, conferences, meetings, and agenda item requests. That's how you get to do those kinds of things from the dais as a part of the meeting, by, because they are agended on your, on your meeting agenda. So I don't know exactly how they do it, I've never seen that happen, but I, I just think that there's, there's some reasons, I think, why some of these things are here in a, in a more regimented way, but I, this is the first district I've ever been in that has had this level of specificity about their agenda in policy, not in practice. I mean, in, in practice, you can do whatever it is that you want, but in policy.
And it may be that we look at what that legal would be. I do know that all the, all the other board meetings that I've attended, Glendale L., Peoria, Phoenix Union, Higley, Queen Creek, all of them have board, board comments, and they don't have it agenda. So I mean, I think we should, we would have to look at what the, what that means for us and what changes we may choose to do, but I do think it's important that we bring this one forward to meet the goals that we set as a board in our board retreat.
May I comment?
Yes, Ms. O'Brien?
I am certainly open to, you know, looking at the Peoria policy, I actually pulled it up while you were talking about, and I do like the idea of whatever, wherever we land, that the agenda we do have at our meetings has that discussion item area where when we are not taking action, we have an area to put things to, to discuss, and I do want to make sure that our board reports are able to continue to include all the things that we have been including, no matter what our policy decision is.
We're all in agreement that this one is a good one to bring forward.
I, I would agree.
So this one will, BEDB will be one of the considered. The next one is BEDBA, which is Ms. O'Brien.
So I printed out the board policy, and then I wrote my notes at the bottom, and for this particular agenda preparation and dissemination, I didn't know if we wanted to add that when an agenda item is tabled, it'll be placed on the next agenda item, agenda unless otherwise stated in the motion to table. And then the other thing we had talked about is that if two or more board members request an agenda item, it'll be placed on an agenda within, and then I didn't know what kind of time period we might put on that, and I don't bring that up because it has been a problem recently. I, I know that.
Historically.
Historically, there were some issues, and so that was just as I went through and, and looked at the different board policies, this was one that I hoped that we might look at, at possibly modifying.
My only cons, my only concern, as far as the, the agenda being tabled in that part, there is another policy that talks about our, basically how we, our rules of order, yeah.
The rules of order, which is another one that's coming.
Right.
And, and that's a little bit separate from this particular item.
And that, I think that would possibly be more appropriate if we were going to do something like that. Again, my, my concern is that we're slipping into, if we're going to, if we're going to full-out do Robert's Rules, let's do Robert's Rules. If we're going to do modern rules, let's do modern rules, if we're going to do, because the one thing I did learn from all the various trainings I've attended lately is that we have to be functional, us as a board, and I, and I also don't want us to inhibit a future board by our, by our changing policy, but I think it's a very valid, I'm just not sure if this is the right one that it would attach to, and also with the, the two or more board members, I think that was on another policy also, I think we identified it. We can bring them, this one and then whatever other one.
And that's fine, if it's the wrong policy, I, I'm fine, I, the reason I put the first one on the agenda preparation, my first comment about that when an agenda item is tabled is that historically, there were items that had been tabled that never came to an agenda, and so that's, I, if this is not the proper policy to include that, I would just ask that it be included somewhere else, yes. So I'm open to suggestions, I just, this seemed like the right spot for me.
And can we possibly look at where that would be, if we were going to do that? I will tell you, one thing I did do, just based on that, because we've had this conversation in various settings, I did do some research, and in, in Robert's Rules, essentially that's what tabling an item is, is when you're killing it. I'll, I'll go in, I'll also send the Robert's Rules to everybody, so we, if that's not what our intent is when we're doing that, because you either, you either, if, if it is intended to pull it forward again, you would pull it off the table. In, in, you would table it, and then it would be pulled from the table, but if anything is changed, you wouldn't then pull it from the table, you would have a new motion in, in, in the reading of Robert's Rules. Now, I'm not saying we've adopted Robert's Rules, but that's just generally where tabling is used.
I appreciate that, I guess I, I was speaking more specifically to examples where we had tabled a motion to be put on the next agenda, and then it did not come back on that agenda, and I don't mean we, this board, again, some history there, so I guess when a motion is made, in, in my opinion, to table an agenda item for the next meeting, and we vote to do that.
I see what you're talking about, because we, we have had that happen.
Then it should appear on the next agenda, period, end of story, because that's what this vote, this, the board voted to and agreed to, and, and the president, if the president or superintendent would choose to pull that off.
Then they did.
We, they did, and, or, or not added, I should say, so I, for me, that's why I try, I put this in the agenda preparation area, is that it then, policy requires you to put it on the agenda, because that's what the board voted as a majority to do. That's what I was trying, I understand what you're saying about tabling to, to get rid of something as opposed to tabling it to kill it, I, I get that that's a, a possibility. But when the, when the motion says, we're tabling it till the next meeting or two meetings from now, I don't want the board president to have the authority to use that as a way to kill it.
Oh, now I totally understand. I, I completely agree, this is the right place for that. It's not so much tabling, because I, I know that prior board president, yes, also did the same thing to me multiple times.
That's how I was.
So, and, and I think that would just be in how we worded it, because we had talked about having that where, where we, if the board has, has voted that something will be on the agenda, the president or the superintendent cannot remove it. So that would be, it would be just a different phrase, phrasing, but we would figure, we would work that out.
That's fine, that's why I brought it forward, thank you.
And then as far as the, the two board members, I'm.
And if that goes somewhere else, I'm fine with that, I just, I know we talked about it at the board retreat, and again, because this was agenda preparation, I don't know if it goes there or if it goes, because it talks about here.
Can we do some instructions if we can?
I mean, that, you would have to, that, that agenda.
Because on this page, it tells us if you want to request a board, or an agenda item, this is where the directions are for the board member, that they must submit it to the superintendent five days ahead of time, that's why I thought that when two board members request it, that would be an appropriate place.
Yeah, and that was something that we had all agreed upon at the board retreat.
I actually think everything you've written is something I would agree with, so I don't see anything.
The only thing I would think is, is if it, if, we'll do research, if it doesn't fit here, we'll, we'll have Dr. B. send it to us in a Friday update, just in case we need to add another one. Or if it's possibly, sometimes policies will have something in two different policies, that way we're sure that we're consistent in the policies.
Okay.
Okay, so go ahead and add a BEDB. And. BEDB, we have BEDD, which is rules of order, same thing.
Am I the one who brought this up, Dr. Weitner? So again, this was where we had just, we had talked about it, I think, in our board retreat about the motion to amend, and, and while I don't think that we need to actually adopt full Robert's Rules or, or whatever, just have some basic ideas, because I think we've had a little bit of confusion, that's where I added this motion to amend, to try to give us, you know, much like we have the motion to table here is in order at any time, there's some, just some basic guidelines at the top, so mine was regarding the motion to amend and how we would handle that in the future, if we're so inclined to actually put it in the policy.
Any comments or? Microphone.
I would be fine with doing that, I mean, I do think, last time I tried to amend something, I caused a disaster up here, but.
Wasn't a disaster.
Not a disaster.
It was a, it was a, it was a minor stumble.
It was a total disaster. I think it's called a learning experience.
Either way, even if we don't end up changing the, the item, I think it is beneficial to have it so we can discuss it and, and adjust how we need to, to be functional.
Thank you for considering it.
I don't see anybody opposed to it, so let's go ahead and bring BEDD as well. Then we have BGB, Policy Adoption, that's mine, that's okay. This is mine, sorry. I will get to it. I didn't bring this one necessarily for us to change, other than it's, because it's the adoption, policy adoption, I didn't know if we may need to change it to, to be able to change anything. I know one thing that historically did cause a problem was the attempt to push policies through all at once, and I didn't know if the board was so inclined to maybe clean up the language, and it is, this is a copyright policy as it's written, but the policy may be adopted or amended in a single meeting of the board, if the board, in the, in a, in a board-declared emergency. I didn't know if perhaps we wanted to clarify what would be a, a board emergency, because there was an attempt to push policies through faster than I think anybody was prepared for in the past.
Do you think we could put this on the pile of reviews, so we could discuss it, and then maybe throw it on in June?
I think that might be a good idea. Any opposition to that?
Ms. Fisher, another consideration that you might want to take a look at is, we have, we have operationalized the words study session and work session, and, and it specifies a study session, we're not in a study session right now, and we're looking at board member-generated policies for potential revision. So we, this study session, I think to ASBA is generic, to us, it's not, it's, it's specific. So that might be something else that you want to clarify that in, in some way, if nothing else, make it a little less study, a little less session, so it's not like a work session, study session.
Do you think it's important that we do that now, or is that something we would do in, after a study session, future sticker?
Which came first, the chicken or the egg?
It really looks bad for us to violate our own policies, I mean, if it's.
Well, again, I, this policy's a copyright policy, and study session means something different, so to, to ASBA, they mean you stu, you, you take time and you study it, to us, it's that specially-called meeting like you had at the beginning of this meeting. So if you, if you're looking at this one and you're thinking about doing some adjustments or anything, I think I would recommend that you do that, small little edit as well.
Do we want to do it now or later, ladies?
Now means, now means June.
Right.
Oh, now? Now is good, if, that's June.
Okay, so go ahead and add this one on.
We just meant we didn't want to stay till 10:30, I think that's what we were trying to say.
Well, let's be a little quicker. Keep going, next one. Keep going, next one.
It's B G C R, a policy revision and review regulations, Ms. O'Brien.
This was more of a technical correction. On page two of this policy, it talks about the superintendent reproducing sufficient copies of the new policy, forwarding copies to each person that's assigned a policy manual. I'm not sure that there's a paper copy anywhere, except maybe in the superintendent's office. So this was more of a technical correction in that we should just clean up the language, because are there paper copies out there?
Every campus has a printed copy. Most departments keep a printed copy. All board members have a printed copy.
Not anymore.
You don't?
No, remember, we chose to-
You're violating our policy. We selected to no longer get our printed, because it was expensive.
That was A R S, that was Title 15. I'm referring to, this refers to Board Policy Manual, correct?
Right, I do have, I do have my paper copy, but I don't think I've received paper.
You are actually going to be getting one this week.
Oh, well, there you go. So, okay.
I've been very hardworking on several policy-
I stand corrected, and there need be no changes on this one. Thank you so much.
All right, next.
I brought this one forward, walkers and riders.
We have board communication and communication with staff members. Uh-oh.
Oh, I missed that, okay.
How could you miss that?
I think that was me. Where is it? Is that me? I think it was. B H C is this one. Okay, I did bring this one forward. My concern with it is, the way it's written, I absolutely 100% agree that if an employee brings us an issue, that we need to direct it to the appropriate line of authority and have them follow the process. I, my concern was kind of the verbiage in this. One of the issues, I can't say I've had it with my boards historically that I've worked with, only because we all know I'm so quiet and reserved. I talk to my boards. I know my boards. And I, I feel sometimes that, you look at policy, employees are afraid to talk to us, like we're some big heads up here. We're people, we're moms, we're employees, we're, we're here for you. We should be your servant leaders. And to do that, we have to be able to talk to our employees. I would like to make the language in this a little softer, not to say that we would take complaints or anything like that. That's absolutely appropriate, that is directed to the correct area. We always let the superintendent know. But I think it should be open enough for our employees and our community members to feel comfortable talking to us without being agendized under B E D H and B H D. I mean, every point of this just refers, "If you want to talk to the governing board, go to this policy, do it this way." I would like to soften it up, or at least have an addition into it that says that the board welcomes your input. Ms. Ordway.
Is there a regulation that go, that goes with this?
AMG.
At AMG, I'm sorry.
Well, we have AMGs for board.
Or maybe, I'm sure there is an AMG.
There is an AMG, but it's, it, I wouldn't say that it aligns to B H C in any way, no. And just, just as a, kind of a point of clarification, we have three levels of guidance. Board policy, we have board regulation, and we have administrative guidelines. That's the AMG part. So anything that is public-facing needs to be in policy or in regulation. Anything that's inward-facing needs to be in a guideline, in an AMG. So this, this talks about the way you guys publicly handle stuff. It's a, it's a policy. An AMG to, that would be the closest thing to this would be for our, if you, as a board member, are going to visit on a campus, I ask those administrators to tell me that you're going to be there. That's all. So that would be an AMG. It's inward-facing, not public-facing.
So, and maybe I'm just a little slow tonight. But if, so if a, an employee who's a parent and/or, or just a constituent wants to express their opinion on a matter, are they expected to do it only through the guidelines of the AMG, or?
No, guideline, the AMGs are inward-facing. They're our, our administrative guidelines. So, so any of those kind of things, you only get to control what, you know, what you do with the information. So when an employee, or a parent, or anybody comes to you, you can't stop them from coming to you. What you do with it is what's dictated by this policy. So in an AMG, for our administrative team, it's, if, if you have, if you provide, the concept is that if you are provided information, the other four ladies need to have the same information you have. And so that's why I ask our administrators, if, if there are issues or there are information that can, will be given to one, all five need to have it. And I'm the conduit for your information. So an AMG, that's the closest thing to this, that doesn't even, it barely is in the same field as it. Because this is how you deal with, or how you all would agree, that you're going to deal with information coming to you. My guidelines are how I want my administrators to deal with information that they need to get to me.
Okay.
Inside.
And I think the AMG guidelines are much softer. They are much more, you know, absolutely welcome, board members, talk to them. Let me know they're coming, let me know if there's issues. With this, when I, when I read this, and I have had people tell me, "Well, what can I do?" And I say, I refer them to Policy Bridge and say, "Look at the policy of the district." And if I went on Policy Bridge and I saw this, where it says communications, I would say, I, based on this, I, I am not to talk to the board. And I think it sets us apart from the board. That's my concern, and that's why I would like us to look at the language. It may be that we decide, for whatever reason, that it's best not to change it.
Well, maybe we, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I was just looking at the word "official." Maybe we need to define what official communication is, as opposed to somebody calling you and talking, but- I think we've gone far, far enough with this one right now.
Ms. Tweedy, you had a comment or a question?
Yeah, I actually agree with what you're saying. I think-
I think, I think it is, I think we should soften it up. Maybe you could do a draft, and then we could look at it.
Okay, yeah. Right, so go ahead and add B H C. What's our next one? E, or E E A A, Ms. Tweedy.
Well, my concern with this one, I think it, we don't have any flexibility to ourselves in the policy on walkers and riders. And when we think about trying to build enrollment, we have some schools that don't have before or after care. And we were discussing at an earlier study session, some don't have, well, I don't think any have extended-day preschool. So if we want to have enrollment at our schools, some parents are going to have to go to kindercares or YMCA's, or even a private childcare provider, if they want to go to that school and their, and their child needs some kind of childcare. So I was just thinking that we should have some flexibility so that if there's childcare centers on the bus route, that the bus could stop at those centers, not drive out of their way. Or if they, a student got, had daycare, if we don't make our schools accessible to working parents, they're not going to enroll at our schools, they're going to enroll at other schools. So I just think having this policy so restrictive, it just inhibits our ability to build enrollment.
I think we did see that with a concern that was shared with the board from a parent who had a child at someone else's house after school, because, is what you said, there was no after-care program, but the child was not allowed to ride the bus.
Those children.
Yeah, with those children, and, you know, my, my thought when I read that, that email was, "We're going to lose that child to a charter school." So, and-
They don't pay, they don't transport either, so.
Well, yeah, but they, but, but, but-
I, I understand that, but-
If they may have an extended after-school program, they may be more flexible. They may make that parent feel like, you know, "We're going to do our best to meet your needs."
And Happy Valley Be Safe, Dex.
I'm not arguing the point. I think the reality in this particular case, we will absolutely honor your, your request and whatever this board wants to do. When, and, when you make things where exceptions are allowed, then everything is exceptional. So just be careful, because then there is no definitive answer. But with that being said, Ms. Tweedy, I would like some language recommendation from you, perhaps. Not tonight, but I mean, as we go through this process.
Well, I just want to know if my fellow board members would have any interest. I just, I think if we don't, if we have schools and there's no way a parent can enroll their child there and work, they're just not going to enroll their child there. They're not going to quit their job, and so that they can enroll their student at our schools.
Well, I would definitely support that we look at it and potentially, at least make it to where our administration has discretion, has the ability to, to, to use their best judgment in making those decisions. But this doesn't have a copyright. I would be curious to see what ASBA's recommended, recommended policy is. It may be that-
Well, this, this one doesn't have ASBA's recommendation, because it's our rings. These are our distance rings here.
Right, so I would, I'm just curious what theirs is, and if there's, I just think it would be a good thing for us to at least discuss.
Perhaps we could look at what other districts are doing.
Okay, happy to work with Ms. Tweedy on this one. And this one could potentially have a fiscal note, too, so we'll, we'll be sure and include that as well.
I just also wanted to throw in there that I would rather not have the administrator be the one that makes or does not make the decision, because that puts them in a very uncomfortable place. So we would have to, in my opinion, come up with some really clever wording that would help us out doing that, because, you know, my, my child has to go to Aunt Sally's, because I'm working here. Would help us out doing that, because, you know, my, my child has to go to Aunt Sally's, because I'm working here, and for four months of the year, that's where I want them to go. And then, and then Johnny down the street sees me. So it's that whole little snowball effect that, one of the reasons why this is such a hard policy to, and I know Jim agrees with me, because we've tried to figure this out, but if, I just don't want the administrators to have to spend their time deciding on who gets to walk and who gets not to be on the bus.
It may be that we look at it and decide not to change it, but I think it warrants that we-
Oh, absolutely. I just don't want the administrators to be the ones that are stuck.
I would concur that we look at it. I am concerned about fiscal impact. I'm concerned about the administrator having a final say. But I also would like to maybe suggest that this, I don't know, will, should be, maybe not get in there for June, because it is a more complex issue that we might need to have a little bit more discussion and provide us more, some more time to consider it, just as a thought.
We probably also would need some data on how many students are we potentially losing? You know, what, is there a-
Well, and what is our current bus ridership? There's, this is a very large thing, if you start looking at all of those things. But I don't know, I think, given where we're, what we have on our plate right now, this might be something that we need to look at after budget season and after we get through hiring a new superintendent. Not that it's not a priority, but we have some bigger things to deal with.
Ms. Tweedy, would you be fine with moving it to our study sessions?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we kind of looked at it holistically anyway with building enrollment, and is it possible?
We add this on to the future review?
Add it.
Thank you. Okay, our next one.
Tutoring for pay.
Tutoring for pay.
Tutoring for pay, yeah. This we changed in 2015, yet I'm still receiving some questions from parents about teachers not being allowed to tutor students that are not in their classes. So I did not know if this was, you know, something we want to review, or maybe we could, I, I just wasn't sure how, well, it was communicated out, and that just doesn't sound right. But it's nine o'clock, and I've been up since 3:30, so I apologize for not saying it right. It just seems to still be something that is being complained about by certain parents, teachers that are saying they're not allowed to tutor. So we'll just leave that one there, because everyone has that face on, and maybe we could just communicate it at some point in time.
We maybe need additional communication, as opposed to review.
Well, wait, are you saying teachers should be able to tutor under that policy, but they don't know they're able to, or they're not able to, and we should change it?
I am saying through second and third party, that teachers are telling parents that they are still not allowed to tutor for pay, even though the student that they want to tutor is not at their school or in their grade level.
Okay.
So maybe it's just communication.
I think communication would be great. And then if we need to readdress it, I would put it with the study session, and the other section is-
I don't think it has to be in a study session.
J K D, Ms. Frank.
Well, student suspension, I don't have specific changes in mind of this. This is something I think we would want to take a long-term view. It's probably more like the walkers and riders. It just seems we've done a lot of hearing, we've done several long-term suspension hearings. They seem, and I'm looking at the information that we've gotten, that haven't been hearings in the weekly update. It seems it's either a 10-day suspension, or then it automatically goes to, like, a full semester. I would be interested in seeing data to show us, is this an effective policy? Are we, you know, if students are given a long-term suspension, does it in fact remediate their behavior? Do they then come back to Deer Valley and are successful? Is this policy working? So I'm not really proposing a change to it. I guess what I'm asking is that we review it and perhaps collect some data, because if the policy is not, if we're not achieving our goals or the results that we want, then we would certainly want to look at some changes, if that makes sense at 9:10 in the evening.
When, when I saw this on the agenda, my first thought was that, not so much that we needed to change the policy, because the policy's okay, but the way it's put into our Student Rights and Responsibilities handbook is that we are, we're going from zero to 10,000 without any stop signs. And I really think that it would be wonderful if we added this to the Student Rights and Responsibilities guidelines or a conversation in that area. So we start considering bringing in, and I know everybody's tired of hearing me say it, restorative justice. We really need to move towards, we, it's, we can, we can restore them and make them productive members of society, or we can incarcerate them and keep them behind bars on a really awful cot. And I just think it would be important, and, so I think this is a very important policy for us to look at with the Student Rights and Responsibilities.
Well, if long-term suspending or suspensions are not changing their behaviors, then what are we doing?
So is that a policy change, or is that our SRNR?
Go ahead, Dr.-
I just had one other, on the data, she was requesting on the heels of that, obviously, what happens after the long-term suspension. But I also would like data even on the short-term suspensions, because I want to know how many repeat suspensions we're having. If it's supposed to be a deterrent, and then the student's behavior improves, or if it's working that way. I'd just like to know if it is working that way, or are the students thrilled to be suspended off-campus? I mean, some are.
I, I.
Ms. Hardaway?
Just want to say that we're getting way off of, um, our agenda item here. I think that if we want to look at our phil-, uh, philosophy and how we are doing that, then we need to s- set up a, a, a study session or, or whatever it is on, on restorative justice, so. I didn't want to get too far off the agenda item.
So that goes back to my question. Do you, so do you want to add this to something else, a study session? Or are there changes that you wa- want to propose?
No, I think, um, adding it to a study session. I do not have specific changes to propose.
Well, then we won't throw this one on, we'll add it to something else later. Okay? A study marathon. Oh, right. Fight the session. Okay, we have no preview items. We do have one public comment, uh, Ms. Best. Uh, Ms. Frank?
Okay. All right, the board invites public comment on the district's business in general and on any agenda item in specific. All speakers must observe the rules of decorum. Speakers must fill out a card listing name, address, and topic, and hand it to the board secretary prior to the president calling the meeting to order. Speakers must make their comments in no more than three minutes. If necessary to accommodate all speakers within the three-minute overall limit, the board president may shorten each speaker's time. Constructive criticism is in order. Rudeness, vulgarity, disruptive conduct, or remarks disrespecting personal dignity are not in order and will not be allowed. Under the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the governing board cannot discuss or act on any items not listed on the agenda. Board members may respond to criticism made by a speaker, ask staff to review a matter, or ask that a matter be put on a future agenda.
Please state your name for the record.
Hi there, I'm Lisa Best and, um, hello, Dr. Vettheimer, President Fisher, members of the board. I'm here to talk about, uh, improving relationships with our community and schools. As a P T S A, our school alone has made nearly $40,000. And our mission is support, to support our school. To give you a little bit of his- history, at the beginning of the year, at some point in time, select staff were told that the P T S A should not be let on campus by anyone outside of the office hours of 7:30 to 4 o'clock. Many people on our board work and the P T S A is a volunteer job, as we all know. Recently, we were getting ready for a carnival and we were told to work on the stuff in the cafeteria, even though all of our stuff was in the closet in the library. We moved all the stuff to the cafeteria. However, when we needed to get in the office, we were told that nobody could let us in the office, not even the janitor. The teachers were left in the middle because they wanted to help us out, but they couldn't. I then emailed the district and I was told they would work for a solution. The solution was to have us contact the assistant principal by text, and she would notify maintenance to let us in the building if it was okay. We replied back that this was not a good solution. We asked to have a key to the closet that, and we were happy to pay to have it made and get it rekeyed and they could have a copy of it as well, so we could get into it whenever we needed in order to accommodate our time and not to get people stuck in the middle. Imagine this, P T S A wants to get into the office to make copies at 4:15 after the office closes and we see a teacher going into the office and the teacher has to tell us that we can't get into the office. It puts the teachers in a really bad situation. We received a follow-up email from administrative leadership saying that there was research done at other schools about access to administrative buildings after hours. The response was that teachers do not let P T S A in the building once the office is closed. I'd like to know which schools that is. Let it be known, we're not asking to get in the office when the building is armed. We're talking about being let in before 7:30 and after 4 o'clock on rare occasions. I then conducted my own survey and I asked teachers, P T S A staff, and six other schools, and everybody said there was no restrictions. P T S A would be let in and no time would they be directed not to be let onto campus. In addition, one of the P T S As even has a key that they use and they check in and out of the office. It's a master key so they can get whatever area to support their needs. In the past years, we've been able to get on campus in order to do box tops, whatever it is that we need. Teachers are even afraid to like our Facebook page. I'm no longer going to be on the board this year and I'm okay with that. But it's really important to make sure that we have a policy in place so that there's no question and that the principals are doing what is directed by policy versus their making, them making a decision. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Um, I do believe we have policies in place. If you could look at the policies and, um, let the board know. We need to make other adjustments or?
I'm sorry, policy in place for?
For, yeah, uh, and, interaction with the public, I believe, the, the collaborative working with, um.
Policies on master keys and all that stuff. We have those policies.
I don't think we have policies on master keys.
Yeah, we do.
Well, we probably do, but.
Wait, I, I think we need the policy on just keys in general. I don't think this was a, a master key she was referring to.
No, well, she was referring to her own key, but, but, um, just in general, um, what our expectations are for the campus in working with our parent groups. Thank you. The future meetings are, are posted. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Can I get a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.